This is the August 1st, 2022 meeting of the Acushnet Public Library Board of Trustees. We are being audiotaped and videotaped, and we do have a quorum. Our first item of business is a whole bunch of minutes. We have the secretary's report from Tuesday, May 31st, executive session, Tuesday, June 21st, regular session, and Wednesday, July 13th, regular session. Does anyone have any comments or clarifications to any of those minutes?
Make a motion to accept the three minutes of the last three meetings.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Next on the agenda is the budget. So you have a snapshot through today for FY '23. So that includes two payrolls and the, um, two full payrolls for the month of July and a three-day payroll, I think it was also. Um, so, so far, so good on where we are with salary. And longevity, we do have two staff members who, um, Sandra made 11 years and Leslie made six years in July, so they've been paid their longevity as well. So now we won't see anything change with longevity until, um, January, when the next staff member hits their, um, six-year anniversary. And then getting into the operating lines, we've only had one bill from Eversource so far, which was a little bit higher than last year, which made me feel good that we decided to ask for an increase to that budget line this year because it's already trending a little bit, um, higher. And if that continues, at least we'll have some extra money within the energy line. Um, building and grounds, um, just been a few things, you know, cleaning supplies that we needed and didn't purchase at the end of fiscal year. Equipment and repairs, we haven't worried about yet. Tech support, we knew that bill was coming from sales. It was exactly, what was 12 cents higher than what they had projected. Um, but we're good there, so that line spent out as it should be. Uh, no phone bills yet, no educational expenses yet. The sales, um, annual membership, we received that bill. Um, came in, um, about $1,700 less than sales had quoted, um, in the initial assessment, and that's due to a grant, a telecommunications grant that they received through the state. So, um, they've assured us this is the last time that will happen. It's happened in FY '21 and '22, and they were not expecting it for FY '23, but they got it, but they've said numerous times that next year, what we see in the assessment is what we're going to get for the bill. So I'm, I'm glad we have extra there this year, though. Um, office supplies, again, those were just, you know, printing materials that we needed. More paper, more ink, um, the usual, um, that we had not ordered at the end of FY '22. Um, and so far, just spent under $1,000 in new material. Um, our main material vendor, uh, they're a company called Ingram. We've been working with them long before I came on board here in Acushnet. Most public libraries, particularly in the Northeast, use Ingram as their vendor. Um, they've just announced that they are having some major supply chain issues. Um, and apparently, a lot of publishing houses are having worse supply chain issues now than they were even a year ago when we thought it was pretty bad. So they're talking about major increases to the price of material as well as major increases in delay times for new material. So I just read that email today. I haven't really sat down to process it yet. I doubt it would be any different if we changed to a different materials vendor, especially if everyone starts changing to a different materials vendor. We don't have many options. I mean, there just aren't many vendors that, um, have, um, pricing approved by the mass higher education consortiums. And we do have to purchase someone that's been approved. Like, the bulk of our purchasing needs to be done through the MHEC vendors. Um, otherwise, we'd have to go to bid with, you know, every time we wanted to purchase new material. So I don't know where that'll leave us. I mean, maybe we won't really be impacted. We're not a library with a million-dollar materials budget, so maybe it won't have a big impact on us. Time, time will tell. Um, and then we haven't done any traveling yet this year either. So, um, a month in, I think we're right on track. You know, I probably won't go as detailed every time, but I figured since this is the first full month, um, it is worth going into that. 12.4% spent out in total. Any questions? Anybody have anything? Okay.
Motion to accept budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Old business, the capacity of the community room. So as you know, you know, when we were reopening the library, we went, we started at 15 total for the community room capacity from our usual 49, um, in the spring. You agreed to up it to 25. Um, and now I think we're at a point where in moving forward, I think it needs to go back to the 49, um, as set by the building commissioner. Um, I feel like at this stage, if people aren't comfortable coming to programs, then they won't come to programs that are indoors or they'll wear a mask if they want, if they're in a group setting and they want to. I mean, the air circulation in this room is very strong with the HVAC unit that's in here. Um, we leave the door open when we're doing any kind of programs in here anyway, so at least typically, we do that. Um, but we've experienced some issues this summer between the heat. Like, we've had some crazy heat on program days where it's been like 95 degrees and you don't want a group of kids outside in 95-degree heat. Um, and they don't want to be outside. Um, but also, we've experienced rain that's too much rain for, to be in the pavilion. Um, and so we've had to limit the amount of people who can attend a program that has to be held indoors, which creates an issue because people maybe didn't know that we were going to have to limit the amount of people who were coming in. So if it's okay with you all, I mean, I, I do think most places are dropping their capacity limits at this point, if they haven't already. Um, and I think, you know, the staff and I feel it's an okay time to do that, and maybe that would change in the future. I hope it doesn't, but, you know, we know it would be easy enough to revert back to a lesser number. But I think, um, at this point, and, and to be honest, I did let 49 people in this room last week when we had a magician, and he could not perform outside due to high winds. That's because that's another issue, that it's like a wind tunnel back there. Um, and so, you know, I did, I couldn't stand the idea of turning them all away, so we, I think we have 45, um, in here. But, I mean, that's totally up to you, but the staff and I are comfortable doing it at this point. And I, people who attended the program seemed very comfortable. Anybody have any comments or objections or anything on that? Okay, three, we need a motion.
Motion to accept the increase in capacity limits to 49.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Next on the old business is the front awning replacement. So thank you again for scrambling to meet on July 13th so that you could approve money to be spent on an awning replacement. I knew at the time that the reason why you were being asked to scramble was because Jim Merritt was preparing to resign from his position as building commissioner for the town of Acushnet. And he's doing the work for the front awning. And, um, you approved it right away, which was great. And I let him know right away, and then two days later, he gave his notice. And I think it just became very overwhelming to him to have to then consider doing this big undertaking of removing the awning and replacing it. Um, he was very apologetic, you know, kept saying he could get it done. And I ended up saying, look, why don't we just, he wanted to remove it, put a tarp up, and then replace it like weeks from now. And I didn't think that was such a great idea. Um, and so I said, look, why don't we just scrap this idea? And I think he was relieved when I'm the one who said, let's, let's scrap this for now. Um, I mean, it's not dangerous. It just doesn't look great, and it's, you know, the facade is rotting, but it's securely there, um, and maybe a couple of birds will come build nests. And unfortunately, Jim and his team would be the ones to remove the bird's nest. And if you haven't heard, Jim is taking his crew with him. Um, so unfortunately, I don't know who will be removing the bird's nest if they come, but hopefully, at this time, they really will. Um, but anyway, at some point, and I'm not prepared to do that right now, so I don't have anything for you for today, but at some point, we're going to have to revisit this. We may need to go out to bid, um, to get some proposals from local companies to replace the front awning. I, um, Jim has expressed that he still would like to do the work, but unfortunately, I, I just don't think, he doesn't own his own business. He doesn't have his insurance. I don't think, you know, we can set him up as a vendor to do that. So I just don't think it's feasible. That's a great word, Nancy. As much as he would like to do it, and he has a lot of, as you know, ties to this building because he, in 2014, led the renovation of this building. And he, since 2015, when we were preparing to open, even though the renovation was complete, he's done so much for this building. And, I mean, even on Friday, he had Tyler and Miguel here resealing the front walkway and fixing a crack in the walkway that's been an issue, scrambling to try to get these things done at our building.
The walkway does look great.
The walk, the walkway looks great, yes. Um, but, you know, even these, there was some tiles that needed replacing in the ceiling in the children's room since 2019. And they couldn't order what they needed to replace, um, the ceiling, but they finally figured out a way to do it. Um, but he was scrambling to get these things done because it does, I mean, I think that's, he would do that for any building, but I also like to think it's because he does have an attachment to this building that's personal, because that's the kind of employee he is and a kind of person he is and friend he's been to, to me in this library. Um, so anyway, long story short, the front awning is still there. It's not, again, it's not dangerous. Um, we'll revisit it at some point when I have a chance to figure out, um, how to go about getting those bids and who to work with. We really haven't had to do this at all in the seven years that we've been in this building because Jim has taken care of this for us. So I don't want to get into it too much, but this is a tremendous loss to the Acushnet Public Library and to the town of Acushnet because they take care of so many things that I don't think people even know they do. If a window falls out of the tracks in this old building, they come and fix that window right away for me. If the bathroom floods and I can't figure out what to do and I don't have a custodian here during the day to help out with that, they come do it for us. They, yeah, they, little things that are now going to cost the town a lot of money to get a plumber to come in to assess the problem, um, to get a company to come in to fix a fallen window. And that's happened multiple times over the course of the seven years we've been here. So it's, um, it's a huge loss. And, and again, he's just been such a good support for this library because he loves it so much, and I really do. He does take a similar ownership that I take to this building and a similar pride in what's happened here since then. He was even here on Saturday to see the Harry Potter party that we were doing down at the pavilion because it just pleases him so much to see how that pavilion is being used. And, um, so his, his work will live on here for a very long time, for sure. And people will enjoy this building and the pavilion thanks to him for a long time to come. So, anyway, just had to see him go, and we'll work on the front awning at some other point. Thank you, Jim.
Yes, definitely, thank you. We'll be, we'll be greatly missed, especially by, you know, us here in the library for all that he's done, and, and Tyler and Miguel as well.
And Tyler and Miguel, yeah. So often, they, they get under the umbrella of just the word Jim.
Right, fair and true.
But they, they were the two high school students, you know, who stayed on and jobs were created for them because of the work that they did at this library. Um, so that's, that's a huge loss, also.
I think it's a shame that this town let those three people go. Yeah, I've been here 56 years I've lived in this town. We've never had people like those three who just, you know, always step up, always do more than what they're required to do. It's an absolute shame.
Does anyone else have any comments or anything to add to that? New business, we have the ARIS report. So the ARIS report, um, in case you don't remember, is the first of the two state reports that happen conveniently in the summer when everyone's doing summer reading. So, um, uh, anyway, um, it's always kind of comical that that's when the Mass Board of Library Commissioners requires us to do this. Um, but there have been, um, a number of glitches with the software vendor, Baker &amp; Taylor, um, this year. So that's caused some delays in being able to complete the ARIS report. I have not completed it yet. Um, and part of it is tech issues, and part of it is waiting for statistics, ironically, from the state, um, to fill in within the report. The report is not due until August 26th, so there's plenty of time to get it done. I was just hoping to get it done before I go on vacation. Um, that could still happen this week, um, but time will tell. Um, but from what I've done so far, I just really wanted to highlight the fact that as we knew from the monthly CIRP reports that I present to you and just from what we've seen happen over the past year, FY '22 is putting us much more in line, um, circulation-wise, with where we were prior to COVID. I mean, we were pretty sure that was going to happen. We hoped it was going to happen, and it's, it's kind of a relief to see that it is actually happening. So in FY '21, our total circulation was 50,852. And FY '22, we're back up to 79,872. So we're in the middle between FY '18 and, excuse me, FY '19 and FY '20. And, um, no, '18 and '19, sorry, '18 and '19. Um, the summer of 2019 was our highest circulation, like, three consecutive months in a row ever. And, um, I'd love to get back to that at some point, but I'm really happy to get back to where we were around the summer of 2018. Um, and so hopefully, a year from now, we're seeing that that's shot back up even higher. If FY '19, we were at, um, over 100,000 for the first time. So that's, you know, would be great to see that happen, but I'm thrilled to see that FY '22 is 79,872 items. So that's my biggest takeaway so far from working on this. Everything else, um, this is just a printout of it so that I can keep up with what I've been able to fill in and what I haven't been able to fill in. Um, statistics-wise, obviously, there's no comparison between what we were doing in FY '21 and what happened in FY '22 because in FY '21, we were doing hardly nothing. So our FY '22 numbers look spectacular because FY '21 had nothing going on. Um, the same way, FY '23 is going to look spectacular programming-wise. So, um, anyway, once I get this done, it's not, it's not something you have to approve, but I will review it again in a future meeting once I'm done with it. And, um, the only thing that has to happen before it gets submitted is typically, it's the chair signs the report that gets sent into the state. So I'll have Jen sign it, and then we can always just talk about it at a later date. But, um, the next, this is the statistical report. The next one up is financial. I'm not expecting anything weird to happen with that. Um, that'll be due, um, I believe it's at the beginning of October this year. I haven't even paid too much attention to it yet because it's not even open for us to do it. So, um, I think they're trying to work out these technical glitches before they get back, open up another report that will just kind of be a disaster for Dan Bell. So, anyway, it's, um, it's nice to see in print that those numbers are really going back up, so.
I think they're only going to continue to go up.
I hope so. I hope that continues, that trajectory continues, I hope. If it's based on what we're seeing in the summer, then yes, definitely.
Good.
So, which is great. So that's all I have for you on ARIS.
Anything on ARIS? Anybody questions, comments, anything? No? All right, we'll move right into the director's report.
I want to start with an announcement because I don't want to forget to mention it. And it's not in my, um, director's report because I just received information about it on Saturday after I'd already sent you the report. So the Friends of the Library, as you know, have supported the majority of our summer programs this year. They've given us over $5,000 for programs, which is incredible. Um, part of that was done through a letter-writing campaign, and the rest was money that they already had from prior book sales and fundraisers that they were able to do before the pandemic. Um, Kristin Liotti, who's the president of the Friends, she was really hoping to do a calendar raffle like the Friends used to do before the pandemic. Their Friends group unfortunately lost three members, like, over the past, two this year and one, um, last year, I believe it was. So they've lost three of their active members over a short amount of time. And Kristin doesn't have many people who are still working with her on the Friends currently. So she's, I don't want to say she's a one-woman show. There are people involved, but I think that the idea of doing the calendar raffle was too overwhelming to her, and she also works full-time. So it's, it's not like that's all she has going on. But she had, through the letter-writing campaign that she did, uh, for summer reading, she had received some gift certificates from local businesses. Um, and we, at the library last year, after summer reading, won a signed Boston Bruins hockey stick through the summer reading challenge that we had competed in. Um, so Sandra, our patron services associate, and Kristin were talking one day, and Hannah came up with the idea of, well, maybe you don't do a calendar raffle, but you just do a raffle with those gift certificates that she got and the hockey stick. So beginning this Wednesday, August 3rd, at the Summer Concert Series, um, so on Wednesday nights, August 3rd, 10th, 17th, and 24th, people will be able to buy tickets for this August raffle that the Friends are putting on. Um, it's, uh, tickets are a dollar each, or seven for $5, or 15 for $10. They'll have to pay by cash or check during the concert, for the first hour, I think, of the concert, or the first hour and a half someone will be here. Um, the prizes are a $50 gift card to Gifts to Give, which was donated by Gifts to Give, a $50 Visa gift card donated by the Acushnet Federal Credit Union, a $25 gift certificate to Roseland Nursery donated by Roseland, um, and a gift certificate good for a one-time treatment, which is a $189 value from Mosquito Squad, um, who also donated that. And all of those entities also donated money to support summer reading in addition to these gift certificates. So they're also very appreciative to all of the sponsors. But these donated, a few, these sponsors donated a few more things. Um, and the signed Boston Bruins hockey stick as well. So there's five prizes. Um, you can put your tickets in whichever bucket represents the prize that you're interested in. Um, the ticket sales, like I said, will be on Wednesday nights, 3rd, 10th, 17th, 24th, during the concerts. And, uh, the week of August 22nd through August 26th, patrons or library supporters will be able to purchase tickets at the library during normal hours. So at the concerts, the 3rd, 10th, 17th, 24th, and at the library's main desk the week of August 22nd. Um, and hopefully, that will help support the Friends, um, which in turn supports our library programs. I mean, that's how we're able to offer free programs, um, which is great, without using our state aid especially, because then we can use the state aid for something else. Um, so I'm sure Kristin would have loved to be here to talk to you about this as well. And I think it would be a great idea to invite Kristin at some point to a future meeting so that she can let you know how this went and to talk to you about any other things the Friends have going on. We, prior to COVID, we did used to have the Friends president come in once a year to talk. There hasn't been much to talk about, but now, you know, there's actually something to talk about. So I think it would be great to invite Kristin to a future meeting. But in the meantime, um, that's what I have to share about that. Um, the Friends will share it on their Facebook page. I'll reshare it to the library's Facebook page, and Sandra will make announcements when she announces that they've provided the funding for the concert, she'll make an announcement that they're selling tickets, and that tickets are also available, available the week of August 22nd at the library.
What date is the drawing?
Um, it's going to be sometime after August 26th. I don't, yeah, I don't think she knows exact, that's a Friday. I think she hopes to do it on the 27th, but that's, that's not announced yet. But it will be sometime after the 26th.
Are they going to be set up outside during the concert?
Outside, yep. And the, um, so there's the walkway when you're heading down to the pavilion, and we block off that parking spot so that people can actually use the walkway. So we're going to set up a table in that parking spot area so that people, they will be visible to whoever is attending the concerts. We figured if we put them at the building.
There's some kind of containment.
They have buckets for each prize. So there'll be five plexiglass buckets with a hole in the top, and they'll be able to dump, uh, tickets right into there. And, um, then whoever's selling the tickets will bring the money and the bins in, and we'll put them in probably in this room. Um, the money will obviously go in the safe until the next week, and then we'll get it again. So it seems like a really smooth way of doing it, and I, I think it will go as smoothly as we're thinking it will, so I hope. Um, but, yeah, I'm really glad that, you know, there is an idea of what to do because summer's going to end and we're still going to want to do programs. We don't have a full-time children's librarian, which is one of the reasons why we spend so much money bringing in outside performers to lead a lot of programs that maybe a children's librarian full-time would do, but not all of them. But obviously, you know, I don't expect that a children's librarian would be a magician. But you never know, you might find one who is. But anyway, um, you know, we appreciate everything that the Friends have always done for us, but particularly this summer. Um, we've been really able to offer extensive calendar events, and that's really thanks to the Friends. So hopefully, people, you know, will be able to purchase a ticket or five or 10.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
At the last meeting, you mentioned you were doing so many programs. You were a little concerned.
Yes.
Are you doing okay? Do you need some help?
Ah, we're doing all right. We're doing all right. You know, the other thing is, is that we're still, and I, I do have that to mention. We're still in a pandemic, really, and people are still getting COVID, whether, and if they haven't, I don't, to my knowledge, called it an endemic yet or whatever the other term is for it. So, um, we're still in it. We've had somebody out for a couple of weeks this month with it. Um, we never had anyone have COVID the entire time until past like two months, and now we've had three staff members out. Um, and fortunately, they're, they're all okay. But when you're out one person here, it messes up the entire cycle. And so then, when you throw in vacation time on top of that, and then you throw in this tremendous amount of programming that we're doing, it does become overwhelming to the people who are, are still here. And we don't really have a lot of wiggle room in our budget for me to offer more hours to employees who are available. And as we've discussed before, a lot of our employees don't want extra hours. They're very happy with the amount of part-time hours that they have. The ones who aren't happy with the part-time hours that they have have left. Um, the ones who are happy with what they have are here. So they don't want to come in. They're hired to work eight hours. They don't want to work 19, um, you know, or if they're even, they're hired to work 12. They're happy to come in maybe one extra shift, but trying to get the same person to come in for two extra shifts in a week does not work. So we've just been doing the best that we can. Um, yeah, I was hardly in my office at all today just to like speak to that question because we did have a program at 2:00, a children's program. We had 40 people outside under the pavilion, which was awesome. But I was out there from quarter to 2:00 before the program started, and the program went surprisingly until like quarter past 3:00. Danielle was there with her son, so she knows. And so I was out there the entire time because we don't have a children's librarian who can be out there during programs, so someone else has to be, and today it was me. Um, but could I have been doing a lot in my office in that hour and a half? I could have. So now I will probably stay late today, and then the vicious cycle of working more hours than I'm contracted for continues. Um, and that sort of is what it is here as we know. Um, but just to speak to what you're saying, yes, it's been difficult to do. However, I, I don't feel like we had a choice but to do a full schedule of programs. schedule of programs, because that's what brings people in. I mean, that's, yes, they're coming in to just borrow without programs, but the lure of a program, I mean, that's part of what we do. That's part of the community outreach that we do, is to offer this awesome, you know, rocket workshop on the back lawn, where you get someone, you know, launching bottle rockets that ended up, God knows where, but kind of having speed in the air. It was incredible to watch. But it comes at a financial price, thanks to the Friends. We're covered from that, but it comes from that, and then it also comes at the price of, we don't have enough staff working. We do have some volunteers, you know, who will occasionally help out with programs. We've had a couple of younger people this summer who have been great for that. But if a young person can't get a ride here, we're not in walking distance from anything. So, if suddenly we find out, I can't get a ride, I can't get a ride, and we blossom. So, that's been tricky. And, you know, I think in the past, we did have a lot of support in terms of help with programs from the Friends, especially if the Friends had paid for an event. But because the Friends group really needs more members right now, we just don't have, you know, the support from them for that. And that's not, I'm not faulting them for that at all, but it's just, at some point, hopefully, their numbers are able to increase so that they do have people who can help out, especially at programs that they've funded. And actually, today's program, they did not fund, and that was funded by state aid. But I think this was the first one funded by state aid of the summer.
What is the current number of Friends?
Of active, like, people who just pay the membership to the Friends, which, you know, anyone can do but not be active, is over 50 right now. But the number of active Friends, I would say, is five, four, five. And two of them are trustees. And there's a fine line between what an active member of the Friends group can do as a trustee. So, we can't rely on those two people, who are appreciated very much, to do those things because there is a fine line between what's, I mean, the Friends and the trustees are two separate entities. And so, you can't just have the same people doing everything, which makes it a little challenging. And I think it's, you know, it's a difficult time for Kristin, who took on the presidency right before COVID, and is sort of, and then has lost three members and is trying to build back. And I'm sure it will build back, but it's hard to build back when you don't have many people to promote it either, which, I mean, I think people can speak to the fact that, I mean, you can join the Friends and just give money. They're very happy for you, you know, to take...
They've always encouraged that.
Yes, right.
If you give money, that's fine.
And just give.
But they really do need bodies.
But, right, it's a point, I think, a point now, that three very active members have passed away, that yes, they need, they need some bodies too, and people who are willing to, you know, take part in fundraising activities. It's a minimal commitment. It's not like you have to take place, take part in a fundraising event every week, or attend a program every week. It's, you know, it's a minimal commitment in terms of that, for the most part. And once they have a meeting scheduled, you know, then hopefully, we'll be able to help promote that, and maybe people will come out to just learn what they're about. They usually do an annual meeting in the fall, so hopefully, that will happen. They're not doing a book sale this year again, because they just don't have the body support. So, I think, once they can get more active members and then get, as far as things come, and hopefully, that'll change.
Jim's on my deck.
Speak of, speak of, his ears must have been ringing.
His last walkthrough.
Yeah, maybe. His ears might have been ringing. So, anyway, that'll, yeah, that's, you know, so we need more Friends, we need more staff, we need more time. There's like, hate to say we need more, but we do. Because I do feel, I mean, I know you all agree with this, that obviously, we're a valuable resource to the community. So, if you give us, give us less, you know, I hate to say, oh, we're going to work harder because you gave us less. It's so terrible. Like, we shouldn't have to work harder. We should be able to just work as hard, but with a little bit more. Like, libraries notoriously are asked to do more with less all the time, and it's tiring to do more with less. And, you know, hopefully, that'll change at some point. I think we did our door count for July. I don't have any other statistics for July, because it's only August 1st, but our door count was 2,481. Last year was 1,865 in July, so obviously, our door count, and that's not accounting program attendance, that's just people who came through the door in July. And that's an estimation, as you know, because we don't have an official people counter, so that's just really hard work on the staff's part to make sure they're getting an accurate count. And in my report that I sent you, I had mentioned that from June 22nd through July 27th, we had had X amount of programs in attendance, but we've since, I sent you the report, we've had three additional programs. So, we've had 30 programs since June 22nd with 1,479 people in attendance. So, clearly, somebody's really happy that we're doing these things, or somebodies, and, you know, just keep plugging away. I had mentioned also previously that we did purposefully do less on the August calendar than we had, than we did in July, because I'm not going to be here for a couple of weeks, as you know. But that doesn't mean we don't still have great programs going on. There's two opportunities for the Not So Spooky Ghost Stories, which is recommended for ages five and up. And that's August 2nd and 16th. Those are Tuesdays at 6:30. You don't have to sign up, you just can come. I don't know when this will air, but Wednesday, this Wednesday, August 3rd, we have a bottle rockets program. Today's bottle rockets program was sort of explaining how bottle rockets work, and what is a rocket, and what powers the rocket. And then they were able to, you know, to shoot off some rockets. But on Wednesday, they're actually going to make bottle rockets. So, participants are bringing soda bottles, and I have to go out tonight and get some Play-Doh, I found out, to use as part of that. We have a few spaces left. It is limited attendance, but it starts at 2:00 on Wednesday, so if people are interested, they can call the library to sign up. We have Candy Bar Bingo this Thursday, which requires pre-registration. We haven't done that since 2019, and that's always a favorite. We have a local author, Alec Carvelin, coming on Tuesday, August 9th, to read his new kid's book, How to Bake a Universe, and the kids will also do a craft. That has limited space, so people will need to call to sign up for that. We have Circus Dynamics coming on Monday, August 15th at 2:00. That is a juggling and balloon show, and it also requires pre-registration because the kids at the end will learn how to make a balloon dog. So, we have so many people in attendance for that, ages five and up. And anyone between the ages of five and seven should really have an adult with them to help that pop in, but signup is required for that. And then, the week of August 22nd, we have Jungle Jim's Camp Balloon Magic, which is a balloon show. We have Bawana Iguana, which is a reptile show. We have improv games for teens. This is something Melissa is trying out. She does improv, and she wanted to try this out for teens. And we have the regular summer story time, some Saturday summer story times. And then, on Saturday, August 27th, we have Mr. Vinny the Bubble Guy, coming following summer story time at 11:00 for an 11:30 a.m. to 12:15 p.m. bubble show, and that is our summer reading finale. So, even though it's less, there's still a lot happening.
Sounds pretty good, see.
In addition to four more weeks to go of the summer concert series. So, all of this information is on the website. If you click the calendar, acupl.org, you'll find all this information there. And if you need to sign up for it, it clearly says you have to sign up for it. And people can also call 508-998-0270, and a friendly staff member will be happy to explain what's happening. And that's about all I want to say.
Doesn't sound like it's too much less.
Exactly. Doesn't, when you say it like that, it's not that much less. When you look at the physical calendar, it's clearly a lot less, but when you say it, and I think it's just because in July, we were just like one after the other, after the other. But again, I mean, the staff is, you know, we, like, so today, I'm outside for the program, but the staff inside are then also scrambling, because everyone who's coming to the program are also checking out books, or they're coming to get their beads for the Read and Bead program, or their scratch ticket, or they've won a prize from the prize cart. So, you know, there's a lot of stuff happening in the building too, and so, the staff are really working very hard, be efficient. I mean, and then in addition to that, you have people who are just here to use the library who did not come. They didn't know there was a program.
I'm sure they didn't.
They're just trying to use the computer to print something, and they got to wait in a line because, you know, there's a bunch of kids running around. And fortunately, we did have a teen volunteer here today to help out with the beads, so that takes the pressure of the beads off the staff. Not that it's, I shouldn't say pressure, but it's one more thing than doing the counter. So, it's sort of, it frees up the logjam. We have someone who can help out with that, so that was great. And we have had a couple of great young helpers this summer who have been, who've been great. So, yeah. So, that's, that's what's happened. That's what's coming up. And like I said, it kind of sounds like, when I sent you this, like, slim-looking report, I was like, wow, it's thicker to think, like, we're not doing anything. That's enough.
Your reports are never slim.
Oh, yeah.
They're all full with plenty of information.
Like, oh, I didn't make it onto page two. But a lot happening, so. Keep going.
Busy summer.
Yes, it has been. But it's also, I will say, busy, and I, and I hope I don't sound like I'm complaining when I say that it's a lot of work, because we want that, obviously. We want people coming here. And it's been super rewarding to have so many people come back this summer, because the past two summers have been kind of sad, because it's been the opposite of what, I mean, when we walked out of summer 2019, we were like, we're amazing, and everybody loves the library, and this is just going to keep growing and keep going. And then COVID happened, and then, you know, is anyone going to come back? And so, it's been great to see families we haven't seen since 2019, or families who've only seen a little bit, or families we've seen regularly who are just, you know, here. We have a new family from another community that just discovered us through word of mouth, and they're thrilled to be using it. They've come, I think, in one week. They've been here, I think, five times.
Wow.
Coming back tomorrow. So, you know, we got good word of mouth, which I think is great. And, you know, I wish that everyone could see how important it is to people. But we'll try again, and hopefully, hopefully, they see it.
Well, do we want to set the next meeting?
That'd be great. I was looking at Tuesday, August 30th. If that doesn't work, we can certainly pick another day. I know that school starts up, like, right after that, or right around that time for some. So, if that doesn't work...
30th works for me. Does it work for everybody?
Yep.
4:00 again?
4:00.
Okay.
And...
August 30th, 4:00.
It might not be, you know, a super-long meeting. It might just be, like, an ARIS check-in and a few other check-ins. But we'll see.
Okay, great. Sounds good. All right, we don't have anything else. Anybody have anything else?
No.
Okay. Make a motion.
Make a motion. We adjourn the meeting.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This August 1st, 2022, meeting of the Kushner Public Library Board of Trustees is officially adjourned. It is 4:45. Thank you.